I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to August fourth, Borough Council meeting. Okay, you want to motion to address council at this time?
Yeah, I will.
Who said that?
That was me.
Okay.
Correct.
Good.
I'm just trying to, I know we asked last time about the, about the Eads Group, and I just wanna, how are they making out, and then, first of all, what are they doing? They're, they're surveying and to design a new infrastructure, is that what it is or what?
Yeah.
Okay. And we looked in, I asked last week, or last month, rather, because I couldn't remember the figures exactly, but I looked through the minutes and I couldn't find anywhere what, what it was gonna cost to do that.
Well, it was back, I can't remember how many months ago they did it, so if you would have been in there, I think it was like three hundred thousand, or?
Yeah.
For the design.
Four eighty-six was the contract.
Four sixty.
Something like that.
How much was it?
Four sixty, I believe.
Four sixty? Because I, I thought I remember four hundred thousand.
You're right. Well, I'll have to look back to, I don't have it.
No, I don't, I didn't expect it to go off the top of your head, but
The four sixty's not my.
I tried to find it and couldn't find it, so I thought, that's why I thought I'd ask again, but, but even if it was three sixty, um, I'm trying to think, so that involves surveying.
Design and engineer.
Design.
Design, engineering, and then the submission of the Penn Vest application, uh, to Penn Vest.
Is that expensive? The submission to Penn Vest? I, I don't know.
I don't know that, what it entails, but I don't know that it's broke down in there.
Yeah.
And the fact that you have to have all the engineering and everything ready to go to submit it.
Yeah.
I can't anywhere, about four hundred sixty thousand?
I'm sure we do, I'm sure it's in the contract.
And Penn Vest, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head, because I'm not sure I understand it all completely, but Penn Vest, is that gonna, is that a grant of some sort?
It would be a combination of both. It can be any different amount that, it all depends on who, how many people submit. Penn Vest has each quarter a pool of money to divvy out.
In the form of a grant, is that what it is?
Form of grant slash loan. Now, if only two municipalities in the quarter that we put in for are vying for twenty million dollars, then the odds of getting a more favorable grant to loan ratio are better. You don't have to accept it. Say we go in and it's all a hundred percent, uh, grant, or loan. Well, then we'll resubmit the next quarter with the same information and try again.
In the hopes to get a better ratio?
Yeah. So when Hamlet Town should put theirs in, I know they submitted, I think, over the course of a year, year and a half, and they were able to get, I think, three million in grant, two million in loan. So, it just depends.
So how do they, when you, if you, if you get a percentage of loan, how do they determine interest rates and, and, I'm, I'm just curious? Do we know that ahead of time, or no?
I'd have to ask Marty, but I know it's a low interest rate through the.
Marty Kouser?
No, uh, Marty, our engineer, uh, English. We would also be talking to Marty Kouser.
He's Eads Group engineer?
Yeah. Um, I'm not sure what the set rate is. I'm sure that it is a low interest through the state. I wanna say it was like one to two percent. Last time we had looked into it, but I can't remember. It's gotta be.
Yeah, that's pretty low. Um.
Does Marty part of the, of the, um, Penn Vest, doesn't he decide that much experience after, you know?
Yeah, they do the submissions for multiple different projects, so, yeah, he's been through it, and pretty successful with it.
So I'm, I'm wondering, how did we end up with Eads Group doing the survey and engineering and and did we do any bidding outside of Eads Group? And if not so, why not?
Well, professional services don't have to be bid for engineering. The Eads Group is familiar with our system, being that the, one of their operators is our certified operator, and that's at the.
Ponds?
Yes. So, that's why we went with them to engineer this project.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because if you had a survey crew and an engineering group of any kind, they could do the same job the same way. That's why I think bidding would, would have been a good idea.
Yeah, just one of those things.
So I'd say maybe in the future, when we do something like that, it might not be a bad idea as a suggestion to put it up, but even if it's not required, it seems to be a good idea to me. And are we still trying to sell the ponds? I don't even know where we are with that.
There's been no conversation whatsoever. They haven't reached.
I mean with Aqua, but are we, are we trying to sell them, period? I mean, what, how do we all feel about that? I don't even know.
We haven't, I mean, we haven't, we didn't put anything out there. They came to us. Aqua came to us.
Oh, oh, okay. That, I was wondering that too, because I did, I don't, I've, I got to thinking about it, and I thought, geez, how did it all even get started, you know?
My personal feelings are that, you know, we're doing everything we can to make a good plan for the sewage system, look at some of our vulnerable areas, look at some upgrading of the ponds, the narration, dredging, work on some forest man issues in areas where we're under consent order from D E P to try and get it brought up. Now, these Penn Vest funds can be transferable if we were to sell, grant or loan would go with it, but if we can get it fixed up, and we get good grant to loan ratios, we're not having any problem, I don't see the need to sell. If we can't do anything, then it might be the opinion that we need to, but it's gonna probably be a year off.
Yeah, before, we know anything about the Penn Vest, you mean?
Yeah, I would assume. I know they're trying to get it done in the fall, but.
October is the first submittal, and then, uh, it's, as Brett said, it's quarterly, so if we don't, uh, like the first time, we can still resubmit it. And the idea is hopefully we'll get a good, uh, bearable grant to loan ratio.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, we hope that.
We have to pay easy the way.
Yeah.
We needed the engineering.
Yeah, now, I don't know what the submission fee is, we'll look for the breakdown on that, but I'm sure that's the lowest portion of this is just the actual submission and application package.
And it was stated that anything that they do, if we happen to cancel the contract with them, then they forfeit everything to us, and it's all owned by us. We just have to pay them for the time, years essentially.
Yeah, okay.
Now, you had also mentioned that there was, there were drawings, there are drawings of the infrastructure, but they're not very good, you said.
Some manholes that aren't on there, there's some that are supposed to be there, that have either been paved over or don't exist.
Aren't, I get it.
I mean, I can't remember, Henderson came and did a computerized program of it, and it's, I would say seventy percent accurate, maybe eighty, but some places that it's not as it should be.
Yeah. I was just wondering, yeah.
And we don't know it's actually down there.
Yeah, well, that's some of them, it's plastic where it goes out and then it ties over, and then, you know, some of them had big bellies in them because the borough crews put them in thirty years ago, and, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
No, I think that, that's all I have.
As far as your questions, I don't believe that every avenue was explored to its fullest extent to see about them maybe doing some more cost-effective.
Yeah, well, that's kinda why I was asking, you know, I, you know, I, I know, like, if I'm, if I wanna get worked out on my house, for example, outside of me doing it, I, I'd look for the best price I could, and that's, you know, I just know the Eads Group's not the only group in town, you know? So that's why I bring it up, but, yeah, I'm done.
All right.
Thanks.
Theresa?
Um, I'm going off memory and what I think I might know, so maybe you guys can clear it up. The handicap accessibility for the library, I believe it was talked about two years ago, and I don't know if the borough applied for a grant, or if the library did, and when did you get the grant? How much was the grant? And getting the project done, since it's been a couple of years, how long have you had the grant, and why, why isn't it done? And whose, so whose responsibility does it fall under the pro, the project? Whose responsibility does that fall under the boroughs or the libraries to get it done?
Okay, can I respond to that? It was a C D B G grant through the county. Um, it is the county's responsibility, the redevelopment authority. They bid it, they pay the people, they do everything. They give us the grant, they pay for everything, they bid it out, it's in their hands, and they'll do it when they get to our project, is what I've been told.
So how long will they hold the grant for? Because isn't there?
They'll hold it, and it's, from what, from what Eric told me when I asked, when I was talking to him.
Eric who?
Eric Ross.
Okay.
Is they are a year or two behind on their projects, but they'll hold that money and they'll hold that project until our term comes up.
So it's good.
Yeah.
And what does C B D G, I, I know, but I can't remember what it stands for.
County block grant.
Great, okay.
Community development block grant.
What is it?
Community.
Community development block grant.
Okay. I've heard that quite a few. Thank you.
Kelly?
Um, so I was just at the fire hall meeting, and they had a question, um, for clarification on, is there an open liquor license, um, throughout the borough, or was that? I, I remember it being visited, I don't remember what the outcome was on it, they were just asking so they know how to answer questions on Swedish festival.
Well, the open.
Open container.
Container, you know, not a liquor license, an open container.
Right, open container, okay, so, and that's for center, is that for the town?
It's for the commercial district.
Commercial district from Anderson Street to, uh, Division, and down to here, and basically just up to, uh, above the fire hall. Just a commercial, basically, area.
Okay. I'll let them know, they were just kinda wanting to know, because I know they have people that wanna walk with it from their area. Um, the Hilltop Heritage is going to start doing a door-to-door fundraising for the community center. I need to know, um, for a peddler's license for a non-for-profit, is there a form for us to fill out? Is there time restraints? Is there a cost? Is there a fee, et cetera?
There is a soliciting license in there, Barb.
Yeah, it's a fifty dollar fee, unless you guys pay it.
I don't know, the library did it, we waived it, didn't we? Probably.
I was gonna say, we're not selling anything, so that's where it gets kind of.
Yeah, for, I mean, as long as somebody comes in and asks, you know, like there with you being a five-on-one.
C three.
Two-three, I'd say, I don't know, whatever else the council feels, but I'd say waive it.
I guess, just to know, like, when you're gonna do it, you know what I mean?
Yep. Um, and I needed to know, is that, like, good for a day? Is that good for a week? How does that work?
Um, the, it would be good for a year.
A year.
Yeah.
Anybody, anything else? Anybody has a comment for that one?
I don't think she's done one.
I know, I just, I mean, as far as.
To waive the fee.
To waive the fee. Does anybody have any, have anything to talk about? We just got a lot to do. I don't see how this is, don't need a motion, that's just a little way. Go ahead, Kelly.
Much appreciated on that one. Um, a couple things, I don't know if I'm gonna be here the next couple of months, so just doing, um, I will send a list of events that will be at the community park, as well as Heritage Park. Uh, community park, September twenty-seventh, uh, will be the suicide walk again that we did last year, it was very successful with the High for Hannah, um, foundation, um, collaboration. Also, the town hall, um, for all interested parties who wish to help, uh, the community understand for the election for November will be on September twenty-sixth. Um, there will be a formal invitation to everyone that, that their name up for voting, um, or interested parties, so that we can kind of figure out who's running, have the community ask questions of those that are running for the Borough Council, um, et cetera. I believe that we have done that in the past, it's a similar idea.
Do we have five or six seats?
We have six seats. Four, um, I believe, four-year?
Mm-hmm.
And then two that are.
Two-year.
Well, I thought one was a three-year and one was a two-year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, what do we have for seats?
Four-four-year and two-two-year. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we had our playground equipment, I don't know, did the borough clean up the dirt? My guy has never responded to me since the install, so I need to know. I, I wanna make sure my name's not in the mud somewhere out here, that, okay, so if his team came out there and cleaned it up, great, I just didn't wanna, I didn't see it anywhere in the minutes, but I.
Rick never said nothing to me.
Maybe.
Them taking care of it.
I was just glad to see.
It's fixed, right?
Oh, yeah, it's fixed. I just wanted to make sure, was it my guy who said he was gonna do it? Because I haven't heard anything, or was it your guys? So if it wasn't your guys, yay, like to hear that. Um, it looks very nice up there. We had our ribbon cutting officially yesterday, um, for the playground equipment. We had over sixty kids there, um, it was actually an awesome day, so. Thank you for that. Um, and then, who's in charge of the clock battery at Heritage Park?
The guys. Has it need changed?
Is it out again?
It, it's, it's great for two times a day. On one side, and another two different times on the other side, so, um, but thank you also, um, for taking care of the flowers there at Heritage Park as well. They look very nice. I'm not sure who did that, but they do look nice for.
Barb and the, Barb and the borough employees did.
Did you ask who the candidates were? I, I missed it.
I did not ask who the candidates were, um, but I do know the list that was posted in the, the, on the county seat, on their website. They did list the candidates, as well as the results from the last election.
Did you ever find out why we're short on those numbers?
What's that?
Six seats, four candidates. And the math, I, I might run to a different school, but that did not add up.
It seems like, um.
Paperwork, the paperwork that was filed, where they all filed for four years, I know you talked to them about two, but it was all filed for four. So when they went through, um, the four-four-year seats, those people that were the highest vote-getters are the ones that are sitting in those positions, and then the two-year seats will be write-ins. Because you just don't take the next ones and put them in that.
And the reason why the, it wasn't, uh, anybody got put on the two years, because.
There weren't enough write-ins for the two-year.
But not ten write-ins.
And that's something we would wanna address during the town hall, so people understand what happened then, and what can happen in November, so that, you know, everybody has a fair chance that wants to be on there. Thank you for your time.
Hey, anybody else? John?
I have two things I'd like to talk about. Uh, the first thing I'd like to talk about is, I'm glad you clarified that the business district is from Anderson Street to Division Street, because that brings up a good question of when we did the sidewalk program, why was the business district from Anderson Street to Brian C's building? Because it stopped, it stopped before me and Winstrom, and, and we weren't eligible for new sidewalk. And so after the sewer determined that the sewer line needed fixed. And so, so, uh, you say the business district from Anderson to Division, uh, why during the sidewalk project, it was supposed to be to the western end of the business district, and you determined during the sidewalk project that the western end of the business district stopped at the schoolhouse? Do you have an explanation of that?
As far as the sidewalk, there was, the amount that was done, that's not just the business, that's part of the business di- district. We only had, they only had, we, so, went so far, as far as what we could get money for, is how that was set up, as far as what we applied for.
So just coincidence that the money ran out of John Hydeoff's place?
And if I, and if I remember.
You were included in that, and you refused to sign the easement.
After you decided that the sewer line was broken in my sidewalk, you said you only could do a section of it.
No, you wanted us to.
I asked if you do the whole thing.
You asked us if you wanted us to sign off that you could park on the sidewalk and you could do whatever you wanted on the sidewalk, and you had a long thing drawn up by, um, an lawyer or something, and we weren't in agreement to sign that off.
Five minutes, does it?
No.
I'm sorry, I just.
No, go ahead. I mean, get your time, that's okay. I was throwing these in my five minutes up, so I got three down.
You were asked to sign an easement, you wouldn't do it.
Yeah, I, I recall you when.
Yeah, they were gonna replace a piece of sewer line in front of my building, and I said, how come you're not doing the whole property? Because you're only doing a little section of my property, only because your sewer line under there needed fixed. And I, and I said, if you're gonna put a sewer, put a new sidewalk there, then I should still be able to continue to park there, because it's my, it's underneath my overhang. And, and, and Barb said, no, you can't park on the sidewalk, it's only for pedestrian use. And so I said, well, then, you, then you're not gonna put a new sidewalk there, because that's part of my parking lot. So I'd like to use my other three minutes for my other subject, please.
What's that?
I said I'd like to use my other three minutes for my other subject. So, uh, so in case the people here don't know, I'd like to explain the basics of how a, a, a catch basin works. It's a four-sided obret, and it's made out of concrete, and, and the purpose of a catch basin, it has a removable grate, water could flow in the top, and it can also flow into pipes to the side. And, and, and its purpose is to collect water from one or several areas, and, and then there's a discharge pipe, and there could be multiple discharge pipes that come out the sidewall of the catch basin, and, and go to the, the collection system for the stormwater. So, so when we paved the street on Gallup Avenue, we, uh, hired Wilson contracting to put new catch basins in. And unfortunately, nobody inspected the insulation job, and the catch basin in front of Ed Hale's house had a, had a brick catch basin, and the catch basin was four feet deep, and Wilson ordered a two-by-two catch basin box. So the problem was, the box wasn't deep enough to reach the outflow pipe. And so they dug the hole, and they put that box level with the surface of the road, so the stormwater could run in. And then they knocked the hole in the bottom of it, so the only way for water to exit that is straight down to where it catches the broken exit pipe, which is below the catch basin, instead of outside of it, because it's the wrong catch basin. And the pipe that comes in, eight-inch pipe that catches all the water from High Street, runs down the alleyway into a catch basin, and then straight across underneath Ed Hale's house, and, and, and originally went into the side of the brick catch basin. Well, when they put the catch basin in there, they couldn't get the pipe to, to reach it, because the catch basin wasn't deep enough, so they drilled a hole inside, and then they put a pipe angled down, so the water all comes, and then, and then it can't go uphill to get into the catch basin. And so Jason Hughes, when he was the president, I brought him up there and showed it to him, as well as the maintenance guys, when I had it all exposed, and Rick Tanner agreed that it was a problem and it needed fixed, and, and by he didn't have the authority, I had to go to Borough Council. And so Gino brought it up at the Borough Council meeting, and the same day that, the same day that Mr. Boylan brought up the catch basin problem, and the very next day, the borough guys were up there looking at Boylan's catch basin problem, and nobody's addressed sixteen months now, the catch basin on Gallup Avenue. So I'd, I'd like to know if we have any plan to look at that anytime soon.
Is it causing a problem, John?
It does.
I'm, I'm just asking, I don't, I'm not up there.
It does cause a problem.
What's it?
The stormwater that's coming from that eight-inch main that used to run underneath Ed Hale's house, now, when it gets to the low point, it can't go uphill to get in, to get into the catch basin, because I'm sure we all know water doesn't run uphill, so it's leaking into the sanitary system. There's nowhere else it can go, it's not coming up through the ground, and there's a sewer line there, so, so that's not supposed to happen. The water's supposed to go into the storm system. And, and it can't, because the pipe runs downhill, and then it intersects and goes up to the catch basin, because catch basin isn't deep enough.
Well, I have to do some di testing and see that it's actually going into the sanitary system, but usually, I'm assuming, is it terracotta or is it plastic, where they tied into it from that, is it terracotta?
It was, it was eight-inch, uh, clay tile pipe, and then they shoved a, uh, a plastic pipe
In.
in, into it, six-inch, it, it, and then, and then it just, it, it just intersects like a V, and then, and then, you know, water doesn't run uphill, so, so.
Well, with the amount of, you know, stormwater that that should be collecting, if it runs the alley and everything, you'd think it would blow out someplace or cause, cause problems, as long as it's not flooding out your, uh, property, or causing ice spots, doing anything on the street. If we do some di testing, see if it's, put it in the catch basin, see if it comes out in the sewer main, then maybe, you know, I can see if it's, it's, it's maybe taking water.
All, all you have to do is walk up there and see that there's a hole knocked into the bottom of the catch basin, for the water to drain out the bottom, and that's not how you, it's called catch basin.
I looked at it.
I mean, that's not how you do it, so we should have never paid Wilson until they fixed it right, but somebody didn't inspect it.
And so, it needs fixed, regardless of where the water's going, it's not going where it's designed to go, because it can't, because water doesn't run uphill.
So we can di test, or camera, or talk, 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 but you can't have an exit pipe underneath the catch basin, it's crushed.
There's plenty of catch basins that need fixed, but I'm not sure if one of those.
Does anybody know the anatomy of the one at the corner of my house that's just been packed with mud for thirty years I've lived there?
Rod and Kevin took that out, and, uh, and, and it hasn't never been replaced. They took that out prior to two thousand and twelve.
The pipes were crushed or something, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure why, but I remember when they took it out, because I was living there then.
Some reason, vaguely remember something about, that line was, you know, crushed or something in there, and they ended up abandoning it, I don't recall why, I think. There's a lot of catch basin issues in town, drive up Anderson Street, I mean, every one of them on the, on Anderson Street, or, for the most part, are.
My point was, we paid a professional to put brand-new catch basins on the street, and we repaved it, and, and the catch basin's installed incorrectly. So you're right, we do have a whole bunch that need work on, but we paid money to fix something, and it's not fixed. And Wilson's working in town, I mean, we should go up there and show it to him and say, how this happened? And even though that was five years ago, I mean, that's the contractor that did it, and unfortunately, nobody inspected it, and it was paid. And so now we don't have any leverage, but somebody has to fix it, you can't leave it like that.
Well, like I said, we'll look into, as far as, I, I don't think it's do any good to go to Wilson, because it's, it's so many years now, they're not gonna do anything about it. Anybody else with, anything to?
I'm sorry, what are they doing? Are they putting in new fire hydrants, or running a new water line?
Yeah, I mean, they. New water line.
Are they bringing it all the way into town?
No, they already did that, uh, probably before you guys moved here. But it's just from the bridge to the borough line, and then, um, when I said at the pre-construction meeting, next year they'll do phase two, which will either be from one side of the bridge to the other. They would have liked to do that first, but the railroad doesn't care about getting permits, uh, passed. And then if they don't have their permits, they'll go from where they left off, all the way out, to forty acres.
Maybe the solicitor could advise you on how to address that issue with the old contractor.
Possible, but it probably should have been brought up, them.
It should, it should have been, but, I mean, he could tell you whether or not it's worth pursuing.
I think it was brought up before, wasn't it?
It was brought up before.
Not long ago, but not prior to that.
Sixteen months ago, in case, and went up there and looked at it.
Jason says that was talked about a long while ago, and boroughs said they weren't going to pay to fix it. Uh, they went back and forth a lot, I'm pretty sure that was the final decision, unfortunately, that's all.
All right, no other public comment, we'll close, uh, for the public, and continue with our borough business. Mayor.
Um, I have, uh, I need to call up with the, um, the group that I submitted the grant to, they reached out to, uh, to connect about some questions. I had someone to do that this week, um, and talk to her with the point of contact that they assigned to us, um, through the, the grant body, you know, the government body. Um, otherwise, just, uh, an early congratulations to the Swedish Festival Committee. I want to make sure you come down and support the pay-and-pay breakfast that's happening at the Legion on Saturday, with the committee, if you, if you can, I know. I'm on the committee, but I also know that everyone works really hard, and I know, um, you know, they really could use support, just for how much they put out versus how much we usually bring in at the festival. It's not, it doesn't always quite align, so I think anyone who, you know, if you're on, but also just, you know, thanks in advance, I know everyone has been working hard for the festival, and it's sort of our, our peak moment, um, of the year, so, um, that's kind of all for me.
Okay, something that, uh, I'd like to, I meant to bring up in public comment was, uh, the use of the truck room for the Boy Scouts for our food booth.
I'll beg your pardon.
Who seconded it?
Who seconded it? Most of the main seconded, a lot of Boy Scouts used the truck room. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Most are good. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna read a letter from, sent here from the Mount Gilbert Memorial Library. I'll pass it around, it says, "Dear Borough Council, we'd like to express our sincere gratitude for your generous donation toward the advancement of our library's endowment fund. We thank you for helping us grow."
We thank you for helping us grow the sustainability of the Mount Jewett Memorial Library and ensuring that the library remained a vital asset to the community with great appreciation, the Mount Jewett Memorial Library Board and Director. And I passed out, she put some of those little stickers there that gave everybody a manual council. But I'll pass this around if you'd like to look at it. Okay, maintenance report. Have you had time to look over the maintenance report? I'd like to say something there on I've had a lot of, or not a lot, but I've had comments asking how come on crosswalks, how come there isn't the little white lines across the whole thing? Uh that's the way when we had the sidewalk project done, that's the way the state had them do it. It was just two lines across. So that's why they had left it that way. But I did talk to Rick and I told him I would like the two downtown here in front of the post office and one on the opposite side of Center Street here that I'd like him to do those because it does make it more visible for people to see, you know, when they come on a bomb. So I, when you see it being done, that's why I would have done it because I asked him to go ahead and put some on that.
What are we spraying? What kind of weed killer are we spraying the sidewalks with?
I, they picked it up at cautious. It's uh something supposed to be.
I think it's supposed to be safe for kids.
Safe for dogs and, you know, animals and people.
Okay, I just wanted to wonder if those are all that or something.
Oh, no, it's uh after having Dr. Sees in there on his about, you know, the stuff we used to use, it we started making sure we we use the proper stuff.
I think most of them accept the maintenance report.
Those have been made seconded, made by Brett, seconded by Jenny. All in favor, say aye.
Sure, we had no overflows. It's been a pretty dry month. Everything's been going pretty good. We did have uh one sewer backup on Jackson Avenue. Um it was a ball of roots in the main line in the area of Deep Jackson Avenue. Roto Roto came and got that taken care of pretty quickly, but it was it was an impressive ball of roots. They had a hard time getting it out of the van, well, that's for sure. Other than that, well, everything's been, all the big ones. Other than that, everything's been going fine. The samples are good and moving forward.
Okay, anybody have a motion for that?
Motion.
Hold on.
I'll second.
Motion made by Emma, seconded by Jesse. Everybody in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Does everybody have time to read the minutes? Sorry, Barbara.
That's okay.
Go ahead. Okay, the Borough Manager's Report. Barbara, do you want to?
Um E and M Engineering completed their design for the next phase in the sidewalk project. Uh it was submitted to Elise Grovnix. Um she was at uh our McWapic dinner when we had it here in town. She offered to do um grants. Uh she's the director of community development for Jefferson County. She also has a small business called Ink and Impact and she writes grants for municipalities. Um she charged three hundred dollars to do it. Um Tom and I talked about it. We decided to go ahead and have her do it and submit it um because she has the contacts that I don't have and the experience, more experience than I do. Um it was submitted, so um we'll see how we do. Um I contacted the constables. They're all set up to patrol during the festival. Um I forwarded you guys the borough and the sewer audits. Um the only uh management statement is somebody needs to start signing off on the bank statements. Once they're reconciled, they need to look at them and initial that they looked at them. Um the festival this week, I just want to know if employees are supposed to be here Thursday and Friday or like we did in the past. That's up to you guys.
Can't do anything down here anyhow. Festival pretty well takes over by Wednesday afternoon.
If you knew, Jane, on council and stuff, we always gave them Thursday and Friday.
Mark's gonna go on Friday.
He's done, so.
Hot day.
We give them Thursday and Friday, so.
Um several letters were sent out for code violations. The letters that I did send out, they were all taken care of. Um I also had a resident that um had come to me about concern about on Kushequa Avenue um where the twenty-five and the forty-five starts and ends. Um evidently, there's a lot of people speeding up there. Um they're worried about, so they asked me to contact the state. I did contact the state. They need a formal request from the borough to do a speed, you know, um a speed. They'll come and do a. Thank you, a study to see if it needs to be moved. Um I just wanted to know if you guys want me to go forward and have that done.
I think it's twenty-five right there where you pull out of the road to the cemetery, that pole right there by Rogers says twenty-five. Because that's where they hung the radar, that little radar sign last year.
What's your complaint? Because it jumps from forty-five down to twenty-five?
Yeah, like it goes from twenty-five to forty-five and people are speeding. I think it's up the hill. The forty-five starts too soon coming up the hill or something.
I'll have to drive down and look it now.
Or maybe it's going down. I know like the problem was that the person has a little grandchild and they're worried about people speeding by their house. But if you guys, I mean, if you want to take a look at it.
It's not against us or anything, so.
No, no, I just have to have a formal letter from the borough asking them to look into it.
Yeah. What they may be looking for is maybe forty-five, thirty-five, twenty-five so that people start to slow down before.
So what do we have to do? We have to send them a formal?
Just a formal letter, like on our letterhead. I didn't want to do it without asking you guys if it was okay and.
Is everybody all right with that? Send a letter to the state. Go ahead and do that, Barbara.
All right, that's all I have to to.
Make a motion to accept the Borough Manager's Report.
Made by Brett, seconded by Jesse. Everybody in favor, say aye. Okay, now. I have a motion to. To for the approval.
A motion to accept.
Motion by Jesse, seconded by Annie. Everybody in favor, say aye. Okay, you get an approval of the Treasury Report and Payment of Bills.
The paint for the streetlights and sidewalks that you got the owners on, they did not sell that locally?
No, they don't. Well, they do. You can get it from a dealer around here. It's three times as much as what you get it on.
More specific traffic paint to hold up to the tired heat.
Yeah, I'm sure it's specialized. I just saw it in here, uh hardware store, any place local carry it. Because I'm all about supporting local.
We used to, we used to get it from that Kinsu Environmental and that.
I think it was in that case.
We tied it, yeah. I had the block.
We retired.
I had the block. You call me, okay. I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brett.
I'll second.
Anybody seconded it? Everybody in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, approval of the sewer apartments, financial report and payment of bills. Just something for everybody to be aware of. Uh it was, I thought about it. It was already a motion, but the electric, I don't know who you use for electric supplier as far as, I know West Penn's a, you know, supplier, but you can have somebody that.
Third party.
Third party. You want to watch it, look on your bill to see what they're charging because uh Barb found out in the library that we were getting hit at.
Twenty-four cents.
Twenty-four cents.
Instead of the ten cent stamp.
Instead of the twelve, around twelve percent. And I got looking after, she told me that, I got looking on my bill. I was getting hit at twenty-two and a half cents on mine, the company I have. So I switched it, but you know.
I'm just staying with West Penn.
That's all I did.
I don't trust anybody else to come out of the the trap. It's a fan and nobody has power and I I trust them that they're gonna be here. So they they charge a little bit.
But I just, I throw that out there and it does, you know.
Oh, yeah. I watch stuff like that, like three, but I'm not, I'm not big on switching to those uh tell marketers to call and all this and that.
Okay.
These kind of guys rock. They come out into anything and they're putting some long hours.
Approval of sewer to uh financial report and payment of bills.
I'll motion.
Jesse motions. Anybody second that? I want to second it. Everybody in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right. Maintenance of streets and buildings. Now this is something that doesn't have to be uh done right away, but I know Brett's mentioned it, Tom Davis at one point. I've mentioned a few times too, when he finally went out and did a estimate. Those receptacles that are on the light holes, they have two circuits that control all those up and down Main Street. And like when the Swedish Festival is going on and we have vendors that plug into them, they're constantly kicking them. So he uh worked up a bill or a cost there what would take the breakdown down. It says labor material to run separate circuits to the outlets on the streetlights along Main Street. All the outlets are now on two circuits and was asked if we could do uh break them down. Uh we would run all new, all number ten wire due to the runs being fairly long. This will put three outlets on a circuit and allow the outlets to be more useful to like the Swedish Festival. You know, and if any happens to be any other use, but you know, how when the engineer did the design for the sidewalks and those lights and stuff, why they would allow to have something like that and you know, have it go that far, I don't know, but it did. And but the estimate as far as for him to do it will be thirty-eight hundred and ninety, thirty-eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars um to have to run new wires, you know, fish wire through, down through and get them broke down onto uh more separate circuits. So it's something I personally, I don't think has to be done this year. Um it's something we want to, you know, and I'm sure the price is gonna change if we go into the spring or summer of next year. But I want to, you know, I asked him if he could get, try to get this in so we had an idea what we'd be looking at. I mean, we may want to wait and put that on, you know, so we can have it under the budget for next year.
Isn't that something we would need to bid? I hope.
I mean, not at that price, you wouldn't.
So I don't think it, you know, put it in the bag for heads and put it, you know, try and work it into the budget for next year and go there because you know, we give them the green lights and they haven't done by this year's festival, so.
Right. No, that's a couple days away. I don't think so. All right, I'll just set this aside. Do you have a copy of that, Barbara, this is the original? So we'll uh I'll tell them this could be held up and we'll put it in budget and we'll probably have to make sure we go up a certain percentage so that materials and whatnot costs go up or even as labor, we're gonna have to make sure we're covered. Okay, anything on the streets and. All right, finance and insurance. Anything else?
Um things are pretty well based this month. Just keep on keeping on.
All right, Jesse, personnel.
Uh biggest thing I wanted to talk about personnel is just a big shout out to them for all the preparations that they're doing for Swedish Festival. I know Mayor already talked about that, of course, but just uh really wanted to make sure that they were appreciated and.
I've been approached by several people for the personnel issue. They um wanted to know how many, if all their employees punch time cards or if none of them do or if some of them do and some of them don't.
Well.
I don't punch a time card. I'm gonna tell you why I don't punch a time card. When I broke my leg, I worked from home. And these people here.
I don't have to explain why.
These people here said, you could be salaried. You're working from home. We'll just make you salaried. You're a borough manager. I don't take a salary position. If I take a time, an hour off or two hours off and I can verify this, I don't pay myself. But I don't punch a time card, but I do write my time in on the time card.
Well punched, right. There's some documentation.
There's documentation, yes.
Okay, so if you have anybody that does not have to document their hours. Pardon?
I don't document. I have documentation of the time I was there, but.
But is it, is it borough policy? Like, is it the personnel policy that everyone has to um account for or document their time?
I think if you're an hourly employee, and I'd have to pull the policy, but I think if you're an hourly employee, yes, it is. But I think if you're a salaried employee and you're paid a set fee for a job that you do, no, I don't believe it is.
So salary.
Personnel policy is supposed to be redone multiple times and never has caught up with it because things have changed and employees' situations have changed that the corresponding documentation never got put in policy. I know, I know Chuck was working on it and trying to redo a new policy prior to his passing and.
I was wondering because I don't know who's salaried and who isn't. Who else places I work? Well, salary people didn't have to and hourly people did, so I just wanted to break down who does and who doesn't. So you don't, you don't, but everybody else does.
I document it. I just don't punch it. I just don't punch it, but I do document it.
Okay, anything Jesse else on personnel?
I do do.
Okay, community development, planning and parks.
Anything exciting, man?
No.
The sinkhole. We gonna explore it? We just gonna keep filling it? What's going on?
Well, I mean, I, like I said, we do nothing till after the festival, but.
Sure, but after the festival, there is no meeting and then we get September. So do we bring somebody in with a price? Because I gave you that one price. The guy said eighty-five dollars an hour and he uses a mini excavator, which is not as damaging.
Right. I mean, I've I've been with the people in town, you know, different uh gentlemen have when I've, they've, you know, either listened to the pro or meetings or whatever and they said that they feel we're getting into a, you know, it's better off just to keep filling it and or else we're gonna ruin a ball field, you know, because you don't know what you're gonna get into if you start digging down.
So that's what you want to do, is what the excavator do, that's eighty-five bucks an hour, start digging?
Yeah, that was the thought, to explore.
Well.
But if we just want to keep filling it, then that's what we do.
I had Mark Severance up here to look at it last year. His advice at the time was fill it because we get in there and it's all bulldozers and trees and stumps and rocks. He goes, you don't know what you're gonna get into, you're gonna have a mess.
I just feel like if you did get an excavator in there without getting it stuck and you started to dig, I don't know what. I just feel like if you did get an excavator in there without getting it stuck and you started to dig, I don't know what the subterranean composition is down there, if something gives and caves this way and you're sitting here in the excavator, you know, I mean, well, you don't know, things could just buckle under there and.
They can.
Uh, the excavator could, uh.
But we're filling to hold it.
With an excavator.
With an excavator.
Yeah, it'll do. Well.
You wanna be the one not doing it?
That's expensive. I think it's a metal fill in there.
I think at last month's meeting, time, last time we brought this up, I suggested maybe putting some sort of road fiber matting, you know, to distribute the load so that it doesn't settle as much, you know what I mean? I, I would be working to try that, the digging up first, and if that doesn't work, well, maybe our only option, we'll put in for, grant for drainage, because it probably needs it, we're gonna be digging stuff up and. If we get in there, start messing around, you're gonna mess up the ground and everything.
Where is that sinkhole?
It's out the back, left field.
Out in left field.
That's still, we just thought it didn't like.
It's pretty cold, yeah.
Does it, does it suck at all?
Rick's saying a lot of issues of the rain, that's what it was.
It'll depend, and then this winter, it's like a freeze, a lot of freeze on everything, so probably get a, one of those sinks by next spring, depending on how it weathered in spring.
Yeah, but it's cheap to fill it, right?
Yeah, it's just the tops of it.
Yeah.
How close is it to the new pavement?
Oh, it's way, it's.
Nowhere, not nowhere near, okay, good.
Alright, uh, so I, you know, my suggestion is we just keep filling it right now, you keep an eye on it.
Yeah.
You know, cause I, Rick keeps an eye on it, when they're up there mowing, he says he's always checking it, so.
Tie string goes back then.
What's that?
Tie string goes back from the light poles, something.
Okay. Fire department, anything, fire department?
I haven't heard anything from fire department. I can give a report on that.
Good.
Is it, do you, do you wanna like switch or something, like, cause?
No, I'm not, thanks, I don't even wanna date anybody.
You don't wanna?
It was a joke. Proceed, no, I don't wanna switch, I'm fine with things the way they are.
Okay, um, I don't know, it's starting to get so busy, um, so Scott hurt his knee and so we, we were down at Ludlow and all of a sudden he had water on the knee and then he was laid up for a while, he hasn't been able to really do a whole lot, so we're, again, behind on the house signs. So I talked to him and I have no experience in any of this stuff, but I'm gonna coordinate trying to get the signs moving after the festival, talk to Brett about like when we could get the un-call done and everything, and it's just a busy week, but, um, basically, we're gonna get a work crew together, um, we got some younger fellows and some new people that are starting to join, so I figure we can get it done, we're gonna go from the ice cream stand down to Martin gear on that side. So, um, we can probably hammer it out, if we can just figure out like what days work best for everybody, so that's on hold. Been doing, uh, fundraising, like I said, the chicken barbecue, we went down to Ludlow, um, did that, and more community stuff, just to get more interest in recruitment and membership, so we went and did Battle of the Barrel originally, um, that was a lot of fun, um. Got a lot of, you know, Facebook traffic on that and everything, um, we've never done that, we had one person that had actually ever done Battle of the Barrel, and it was so much fun that we approached the Swedish festival about possibly having it here next year, um, you know, and making that part of the event, so. Anyway, we're gonna have some younger fellows at a table during the Swedish festival and, and we're just trying to get recruit and get more interest in the fire department, um, so things are, we're ready for the barbecue we're gonna have this weekend and all the events, and I appreciate, you know, Kelly asking that question because, yeah, we're sure exactly who we usually, like we have all the things there and everything, so just trying to set up and everything.
Do they give wristbands and stuff up there to check your ID?
Yes, we give wristbands, we get the electronic ID checker, yes. The pictures looked very cool from that event, you guys looked really badass in the pictures.
Our cut off nails, that was the last minute.
It was, those are good, those are recruitment pictures, just put those up all over now.
Okay. Library.
Library, so at the library meeting, um, Courtney let us know that there's over three hundred patrons at the library now, which is great, because, um, I don't fully understand, but I guess like the membership cards are more members that you have, you know, like the more opportunities I think you have for funding. They're on track with the book grant, um, I liked the discussion that they had, uh, about care for the mural, they talked about, you know, getting that, um, it's starting to peel a little bit, so making sure the protective coating is on there just to.
Needs reseal.
To safeguard it, yeah, um, they were talking about the ant problems in the maintenance report and getting that fixed, um, that's all done, they, as of July ninth, they haven't seen any more of that. And just all the programming is going well up there, I really appreciate, um, all, just also being a member of the Swedish Festival Committee, all the support that the library Courtney gave us for the contests, you know, the pet can contests were, cans were up there, um, probably the baby contests will be up there, the coloring contest, and then, um, the little tiny art project that she's got going, she's got a lot of entries for that, so that's gonna be pretty cool, and the books, yeah, so, busy, busy.
Okay, anything under code enforcement?
Yep, gotta talk to Barb about one issue that was brought to my attention the other day, and that's loaded up.
Jesse, sewer operations?
Uh, I don't have too much, um, I did talk to Marty this month of course, but it was brief because, uh, he's planning on coming in next month, um, as far as I know, everything seems to be copacetic, we're on the tracks for the October submission, um. I, I think that's, uh, sufficient for this month, but.
He's gonna be in town next week, we're gonna do some camera work, camera some of the sections in line.
What's going on with Penn?
Uh, I submitted it, uh, I've gotten a general response, I'm gonna hold off on that until I can get things formalized, but progress.
Baby steps.
Kinda like this, kinda like the sinkhole.
Kind of.
I believe Bill Murray said.
Any aeration, right? How's that going, Bob?
Hey, we're there, we got some aeration running.
Yeah, I mean, uh, solars are running, but, uh, town never did get back to me on.
No, I told him I have to, um, get some, get some braces on it, but it's also being worked into our pen vest.
Right, right, I figured they were, cause I told Marty we need to, we were down going to.
So he's going to upgrade the ponds in the pen vest?
That's part of it, yeah.
So then the dredging will be covered under the dr- pen vest, according to him.
We're hoping.
Well, if you upgrade the system, he said, then there more app to cover that in.
Dredging with the new aeration, the type that I've suggested.
Mixers and whatever else you decide to put in.
Well, something I had asked Marty, I was questioning him on, was about having the mixers in there, I said, now, have they been in there since the ponds were built? He says, no, he said, these ponds originally are designed to, the bacteria just to take care of things themselves, you didn't have to use aerators, and he was supposed to check for me to see when that was started and why it was started, if it was designed to, you know, like a septic tank. If your septic's working right, you shouldn't ever have to clean it, anything out of, uh, at least what blew up, Woody told me, at least twenty-five years. You know, that's why he told me if, if you, your bacterias are eating the crap and stuff like this close to, um, at least twenty-five years.
I would say those mixers were put in when they put the sand filters in, part of that, right, it was like the early nineties.
Yeah.
So they had to be put in for some reason.
Yeah, late, late eighties, I think, is that what we were just looking at?
Yeah, some of it was where prior, why would they put new air, air running?
Eighty.
Was questioning library on, he would get checked, you know.
There was an issue they were trying to fix.
The DEP records are within the DEP to see, you know, when they were put in and why, you know, they had to put them in.
I thought they didn't air it, I thought they just have water in these holes, you didn't, I thought that was their purpose.
Well, it, it moves things around so that your bacterias grow, you know, it gives oxygen to them so that they, uh, and they eat more of the poop. I'll be nice about it. But I, that's something I gotta get back to him, cause that's been probably a month and a half or so ago that him and I had.
Well, if he's working it into the other.
Right, and I know, but I just still wanna know, I mean, it's a question I have.
Yeah, cause if he's working it into it, then.
Yeah, and he's supposed to be working all that into, into that grant, so.
I mean, we haven't really seen buildup, based on one year to the next.
We haven't done our sludge report yet, probably get September.
Took the last one I saw, which was more points, much more data points, which gave you a better picture of what was going on, you're still twenty percent over, but, you know that.
It's not growing at an exponential rate.
No.
Alright, so anything else on sewer?
That's it for me.
Alright, done, new business. Resolution to apply for the model, model trans- uh, transportation grant for the sidewalks on East Main Street. We submitted it.
With a waiver.
With a waiver, we had to have the council's approval, but we can't, I mean, I hope everybody's in favor of it, cause we have to have that to, for that grant. And, uh, and the lady, as Barb told you, I gave her the okay to go ahead and do the, pay the three hundred dollars, cause I think it was well worth, you know, to get that, you know, and hopefully get it to go through, she, you know, she knows how to cross her Ts and dot her Is, so.
Motion to retroactively.
Huh?
A motion to retroactively accept that?
Yes. Motion to main second, everybody in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Alright, uh, bids for the truck, the two thousand sixteen F five fifty, the best bid we had through Minnesota bid was forty-one thousand dollars. We were contacted, which was below our, what we had our.
Reserve in.
Reserve at. Forty-five. Uh, we received, Barb received a letter from a, um, gentleman out, I'm not even sure, Montana.
M O, it's Missouri, isn't it?
Missouri. Okay.
Missouri.
He, uh, submitted a, he's the one basically submitted the highest bid, but he sent a letter personally wanting to bid it, you know, if we wanna sell it.
Asking if we'd accept his bid.
Yeah, we accept his bid.
He said, I'm the highest bidder on.
On Minnesota.
Minnesota bid, would you guys accept my bid outside of Minnesota bid?
When was that letter dated?
It was done, he did it on the.
Was it a while ago, or is this?
I'm trying to think of when the Minnesota bid ended, it ended last Thursday or Friday, and he contacted me that day.
So he wants to go outside of Minnesota bid and just buy it?
Which Minnesota bid, I'll tell you what, when you don't hit your reserve, they send you a little thing, I have a copy of it, if you guys want to see it, it says, bummer, your reserve wasn't met, if you would, um, like to, they, would you like to re-advertise this? Or if you'd like to reach out to the highest bidder and offer it to them, you can do that. So I didn't contact them, this gentleman contacted me.
And he sent a, was that an email he, he sent that on?
He actually called me on the phone and, or and then.
I would move to accept it because.
And then he texted me back and forth.
All models start dropping in their value, because the new models are coming out for next year, in a couple months, it's gonna, you know, the, the book value is gonna tank some more anyway, so.
I agree with that.
I'll second.
Okay, wait a minute.
Jane, you're making a motion to accept it then, right?
Yeah, it's, well, I always like to, yes.
Frank here.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion been made and seconded to.
We were only looking for forty, so.
Bids of forty-one thousand dollars.
Is he coming to get it?
So is.
Yeah, he'll have to come and get it.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carried.
I thought Barb was gonna plant flowers in it.
I figured that was just so somebody could see it.
Yeah.
No, actually, it was because all this stuff was coming, they didn't wanna leave it up at the borough lot where it could be messed up, or out here where it could be hit, so I told him, go ahead, park it in front of the house.
Make a motion to support the American two fifty PA centennial celebration.
Second.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to support the American two fifty PA. I was gonna say that, I can't even say it.
Someone's saying centennial.
Everybody in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. I think there's something.
I just have one question, as far as the proposed windmills that are going to be going in, do we have an official position, I know it won't really affect.
The what?
They're not the windmills that are supposed to be going in.
Black cherry solar.
There's our borough, an official position on that, I know they're not gonna be putting them right through here, but, um, they are going to be affecting McKean County residents, and, um, I think it would be important to have as much local and area input as possible on those. I, for one, am very, very opposed to them, but, um, I just thought it would be maybe in our best interest to start maybe throwing something together, like I said, I don't think they're gonna want to build them right here, but they could.
Pretty handy.
Our town too, and it'd be nice to have something written up ahead of time, because, um, what I'm hearing from a lot of people is, um, they had to hurry up and put something together, because they really didn't have an ordinance or any kind of, uh, language that, uh, wouldn't allow them to do that.
I know there's signs that I drive by every day going to Crosby, and it, it gives some information about where to reach out and voice your, uh, opinion on it, and maybe I'll take a picture of it, we can, I don't know if there's a phone number, we'll call and see if that truly could help if everybody was in favor, or individual council members would voice a matter.
Well, I, I'm in grants with Jane as far as start looking into it and get an ordinance against it, if that's what we.
Yeah, get something in place ahead of time, so that if they come here and wanna do something stupid, we can say, no, you can't, instead of being stuck like some of these other townships and municipalities that, um, are scrambling to put something in writing to oppose them, but it's.
Reach out to Hamlin, I know that they went through the process with Norwich, um, and I believe Keating, and I think they all have the same verbiage in their ordinance, and it's talks about offsets and how far back it has to be, and this and that, from the nearest, I find structure, et cetera, et cetera, so. I know they've done it, so I'd love to add it to our.
Yeah, and it'd be nice to put the.
There's no reason to clear land, there's plenty of other places.
Holland?
No, what was it, up in, up in, up in Erie, with the solar, would they do in that one park? Every parking, um, shelter has it. They didn't have to clear no land, they just ran it that way.
Oh, I don't think not to, I'm assuming the parking.
Straight down, I don't know.
No.
Across New York State, that's where Howard goes.
Okay, can I? Motion to adjourn, second it, everybody in favor?
Okay, who motioned?
I don't know.
Brett?
Jesse seconded, everybody in favor, right?
Sure.